I only need to restart your router. Leave it off for about a minute, then start it back up, and then turn your computer off and turn it back on. It'll reboot everything.
Right.
Right. He tells me the story of how he was doing. See, there was one last one, four dollars. First one down. It was a cool truck. That was back in the day. Twenty-five years ago.
Seaford Town Hall, they were trying to quit. What was going to be for making cars, except for the Mustangs.
They just make trucks.
My grandpa did that.
They just decided they can't repeat on those small cars.
My grandpa did a pretty good thing. The front and center were still nice. There's every I can bear. Yeah, a lot of the bottom part of it was a front. You got like seven I can't even imagine. Seven I can't even imagine. No way. He sort of bettering the way he used to.
He probably was. His truck.
He's also people I could just relax at. So I think. You say see him here. All that just like a picture. Yeah. It's one of the. Like a man's choice. I don't want to bore them. But I think. More white than a lawyer. And right first. What?
The smartest guy in the room.
I would like that. We can do one and then say what's on. How's that work now?
No, I think they.
It's all good. Good. Go around the. He said something doesn't work, so we're gonna think animals.
They keep the cattle.
And some things. You figure out how to do it yourself.
I would hope so. I don't know where they are.
Floppings. Hard to even notice.
Yeah, exactly.
How even? About a quarter of the house. It's like, well, really, it's seven hundred and fifty bytes bits. Because the three and a half is twice the size of it, a little half meg. So it's half of that. So it's about seven hundred and fifty kilobytes.
You get a bonus.
One pound and a quarter of that. There you go. Three and a halves. Those would be what we call the hard disks. They were made out of hard plastic, but it's a mess. They weren't actually coming.
Yeah, now. Repair my heart.
It's a hand hand. My phone holds more than my first computer, Dan. The memory card in my phone holds more than this one. I remember the first computer we got with a hard drive. It was the teeny, but the next one had one point two gigabyte hard drive. And I thought I would never have.
Don't take much, it's all terrible.
How's it going?
Stand up and walk up, I'll make sure I'm tripping.
I appreciate it.
I'll give it close up.
Show you time.
This is my grandfather.
Treat it like a mirror. Up to it, to your hair. It is quite a bit of a date. I almost saw that. Like I put it on the back. So I did some. I did some research on it. And they've pulled. They used to have, this was from nineteen. So I mean, they got third and. So what the chief knew. They clarified it was covered. Right, very many cars, thirty years old now, so way past its prime. And. And what they're moving to. And a lot of. And so the multi-purpose truck will be like two or three of them. Like it'll be a pump truck, but then it'll also be like emergency response table. Not necessarily. Yeah, yeah, any some carryable.
Apologize for the delay. We had a computer problem. We got that big error.
Congratulations to the United States of America to the Republic which stands on the nation of the God invisible liberty and justice.
Your God as we gather in the night, we thank you for this one town we live in. As council asks for strength and virgin wisdom. We thank you for this one town in behalf of the religion serving in Jesus' name.
Call an order that June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Georgetown Council. Gentlemen, had an opportunity to read the minutes from our previous meeting. I need a motion to approve or amend.
Make a motion that way approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion. Made and seconded. On favor. Under new business, of course, we have the compliance forms, the CF ones, several of the local businesses. So it's a great honor to go through these and take a look and see how the companies have done and. Experience growth in our community. Under TOA CF one, we have real and personal property. We have a resolution and just itemize these through our through the resolution number. We have a resolution two, two thousand and thirteen for personal property. That was for seven million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. We have a motion to find you in. Substantial compliance.
I would think most of the substantial compliance. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Also on resolution two, two thousand and thirteen, we have real property of five million, two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Need to say?
Make a motion.
Sorry.
Mark it. I'll say it.
Do you second? Joe? Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Next, we have resolution eight, two thousand and fourteen for personal property, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to approve. Make a motion that way approved.
Second.
Also on resolution eight, two thousand and fourteen, we have real property, six million, seven hundred and. Seven hundred and ten thousand.
You forgot to vote her. Second, sorry.
I have a motion by Dustin and a second by Joe on favor.
Aye.
I apologize, thank you for that. Real property on resolution eight, two thousand and fourteen, six million, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
We're gonna take just a quick break because Sandy is. We have a little bit of a malfunction here.
I can tweet, chain, and maybe miss anything, you can always go back and recapture what we missed.
Redundancy is nuts.
Redundancy.
Standard data. Always have redundancy.
Next, we're gonna do resolutions eight, two thousand and fifteen, personal property of forty-one million, seven hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Motion to approve.
Salute.
Motion made, I have a second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded on favor.
Aye.
Resolution eight, two thousand and fifteen, real property, thirty-seven million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty cents. I'm not sure what that thirty cents was like. That's right. I need a motion to approve.
Favor. Motion to approve.
Motion made, I have a second.
Second.
Made and seconded. On favor.
Aye.
Resolution ten, two thousand and fifteen, personal property, eleven million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. On favor.
Aye.
Real property, ten million, four hundred and sixteen dollars, seven, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor. Resolution twelve, two thousand and fifteen, real property only, seven million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Seconded by Joe. On favor.
Aye.
Thank goodness she's here, he's been misbehaving the whole time.
I don't know how much help I'll be.
Sippy and I will be hitting them in the head. Resolution two, two thousand and sixteen, personal property, twelve million, nine hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Somebody.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
And seconded on favor.
Aye.
Did not add those all up, but that is a wonderful investment. We certainly appreciate everything that WSA does for the town of Warshville. Employment wise, corporate partner wise, and friend wise. Next item, our next company that has turned in their CF ones. Pack, Pack Four Assets.
They are here, by the way, just so you know.
Pack Four?
ProBuild. I'm sorry, ProBuild. My, my, I apologize, I need that. ProBuild, I need that. I'll move on, we'll get there.
Resolution one, two thousand and twelve is for real property. It was three million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Resolution fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, personal property, three million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Real property, one million, ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Again, Pack Four. Again, some of their, all of their information is available on here. Pack Four employs a hundred and sixty-four people with salaries that exceed five million dollars. We thank you very much, Pack Four. Lynn El. We already approved some of Lynn El's, they did turn in their paperwork, and it does cover all of them. We're gonna go with resolution two, two thousand and fourteen. It was for real property, five hundred and eighty-six thousand and eighty dollars. Motion to approve.
Somebody. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Resolution ten, two thousand and fourteen, for personal property, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
The ending with their paperwork was for resolution ten, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and eleven, two thousand and sixteen, and those were approved in the last. Another fine company, maybe one of the anchor companies, and for lack of a better term, in our industrial park. They employ ninety-five people with salaries that exceed five million dollars. Now, so you won't be upset, they employ by the way that they're on here. My next.
I tried to move you.
Next company was Cornerstone Warshville LLC. This was resolution nine, two thousand and eleven, this was for real property only. Their investment was two million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
A company that, that, through that building, they employ over thirty-two people, or thirty-two people with salaries of over two million dollars. We save the best for last, this would be ProBuild Company LLC. ProBuild Company has came to us with a resolution nine, two thousand and ten, personal property of five hundred thousand dollars. Need a motion to approve?
Somebody. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
They had same resolution, first, uh, real property of two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
ProBuild, since you're here, I will thank you personally. We certainly appreciate you coming to say and employing fifty-nine people with salaries of approaching three million dollars. It is amazing to me when we look at the diversity of our companies throughout our community, and it's impressive when we can tell someone that we have a first-class building materials, finished product company within our town. So thank you very much.
Those are kind words, and we certainly appreciate all that the town council, the town, of course, will, and Economic Development Corporation does for us and all the companies. We appreciate all the support.
I think one thing noted too, that pressed me on this, of course, they estimated, you said they had fifty-nine employees, but they only promised a swing. So thanks, thanks.
Thanks a big lot.
We applaud you for that as well.
It gone very well. We do have a number of, we also have a number of temp employees that we convert as we can to full-time employees. So. It's going extremely well, running about twenty-one hours a day right now, so we are pushing some capacity issues that we may need to approach soon, very soon possible.
That's good news.
Exactly.
Thank you.
What he says is, Mike, don't pummel that foot.
That was pretty mild.
Next item on the agenda is ES Group One, Zedon Independence. For FlowSource. This is a new company, we, we did a rezone on the property, on two properties in Flagstaff. We're gonna shift gears just a little bit if you have. Resolution five, preliminarily designate economic revitalization there then, and qualifying certain personal property for tax paid, and qualifying certain real property for tax paid, for FlowSource. It will be resolution five, two thousand and eighteen. Motion to approve, resolution five.
Salute. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Gentlemen, now that we've, now that we've approved resolution five, we need to set our next meeting for the. Affirmatory resolution. That would be June nineteenth. And motion to set to nineteen as the affirmative public hearing.
Salute.
Second. Motion made and seconded on favor.
Aye. Aye.
Time to seven on the agenda, hope to be awarding litigation.
As for me, I talked to Tom about this two, three weeks ago. Our law firm along with Coleman and Mullin in Indianapolis, sort of, some of the council. There's a class action suit that's been filed on behalf of municipalities, cities, counties, areas. Because of the tremendous costs that they're incurring as a result of the opioid issues. Effort there is to recover expenses, police department, fire runs, medicine. Because Mooresville, I don't think, has an ambulance service, you may not be effective as much as the community runs that. Obviously, we're really serious problems with that. What I've done, and I've brought a handout for what in the action tonight passes out everybody, and I've got a copy for your police chief and your fire chief, so they can take a look at this too, because I think it may be extended significantly, it affects your town. I imagine your fire and police are the people that are most involved in this, is worth recognizing what they cost the town. You know, the issues, so. Nothing in addition to that right now, if you'd like to take a look at that, if you're a police agent, it'll be open either to something. The town may be able to be added as a defendant, it's obviously a contingent fee case, so we can prove the case. The town board, the county, the town board in anyway. The only expense, or depending on how these things play out, and sometime or other, some of your staff, they may come in and argue that as to what Mooresville's cost, or that sort of thing, and deal with it. But, I don't know, it'd just be a matter of investing some time. So, I'll let you take a look at it, and get back with me, and decide if the town where you're going to join the court in Northern Illinois, federal district court in Northern Illinois, has the first case set on that. We've been for the pre-trial on that, it's set for next spring. The federal district judge here has made it very clear that that case will go forward next spring. We know court continues, so it's going to be close season. We've got people getting hard, badly, hourly, and he wants a case to go, so if you love that, you know.
Thank you.
Your business.
On the going, we need to mention that as well, because we think we covered both of those. There's a personal property, then there's, it would be two there, we're going to go confirmatory next week, or is that what we need to do now as well, I think? Before we get too far, so. If you covered it, I apologize, I didn't hear it.
Mark, I appreciate you catching on that. Let's, uh, let's re-rote it, because this will be setting the public hearing for both FlowSource for personal property, and then also for Mac Allen, Town Real Estate LLC for real property.
Right.
Personal property and real property. And we need to set that as our, as our next meeting has the hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Next item, Spiglast, gentlemen, this is the program that I brought to you last meeting. This is a phone call basically from a company that has worked with several companies here in the town of Mooresville, the school being the most prominent one. They look at our communications building, include, up to and including landlines, cell lines, or cell phones, internet service, and TV service also. As I said before, the way that they are recorded or get paid is, we'll go back through on what they call recoverable expenses. Items that may or may not have been built in error. What they do is they will go back as far as they can. Anything that has been built incorrectly, they will request back. From that, they will want fifty percent of the proceeds. And then, anything that they can negotiate at a better rate moving forward, they will request twelve months of savings from, they'll negotiate the terms and conditions of new contracts at a lower rate, and then bill us for twelve months worth of savings. Now, everything is all in part, we can go back to them, or we can have them, if we choose to have them do this, they will tell us, this is what we can do for you, this is how much it will cost you, we can pick all or none, or we can pick pieceback. Yeah, we want you to go back for the recovery savings, for not moving forward with the, you know, moving forward with any other savings, it's going to cost us twelve times the amount. I don't know, I have no idea how much, if any, that this would save or improve the town of Mooresville. I just know that after speaking with them, and speaking with Randy Taylor at the school, they have used them, they've actually used them twice. Because one of the things that they found is, when they change communication companies, or when they change IT people, sometimes, sometimes things get changed, and they'll get an oversight that they, that wasn't better. Questions? Comments? Do we want to do this at this time, do we want to wait? Do we want to enter into contract as soon as they can? They said that they will come in, and they will ask for approximately three months of building history. I can explain to them that a year ago, we had changed our, most, all of our landlines, definitely the police department, to a different provider. And they will go back with the previous provider and the provider, as far as wanting to see this.
You said we could pick and choose, if we already decided, I mean, the pick and choose part, you said with all the cards.
That is afterwards. That is after the fact, that's where they bring us the results, and say, here's what we can do.
Okay.
We say yes, no, there is no charge to start this process, there's no charge to do this process, they make the contingent on the settlement.
Well, I think based on what I've looked at, as of last year, two or three years ago, we'll be, we had a phone situation, and the schools used them a couple of times, so I felt like we should go ahead and give a shot, so I'll make that motion, we should proceed.
Motion here to the contract. Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to be signature to enter into the contract event?
I think we really need that, but I'll make the motion, they've already made that, the president can sign that anyway, so. I'll make the motion if you're to be the signatory.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's what fixed it. There's several things tonight, I want to thank you for allowing us to speak, and keeping us on the agenda on the unfinished business category. We're here tonight to formally place on the record our request asking council approval of our counter offer, so. Mr. Van Nuys, have you spoken to council?
I have not.
Okay. So you have not spoken to them at all?
No, because we haven't had an opportunity to, to get into the information, and now we have to look at and see what we're responding to.
Okay. We understand that when we spoke, you indicated that there would be a special session necessary for this meeting to be called. We feel you're mistaken, we have the belief that you're allowed to do that. Special executive sessions are to discuss this particular issue, we want to refer directly to the Indiana Code, section five dash fourteen dash one point five dot through six point one. She's passing out the information, please mark this as information packet number one. Please refer to your handout, in the spirit of transparency that your board is now adopting, please notice the areas highlighted in the hot pink. I'll read them out loud, so please follow along. Executive sessions may be held only in the following instances. Section B, initiation of litigation or litigation that is either pending, or has been threatened specifically in writing. As used in this clause, litigation includes any judicial action or administrative law proceeding under federal or state law. Also, attorney, a meeting may not be recessed and reconvened with the intent of circumventing this subsection. And as you're allowed to concede, you are not allowed to hold executive sessions because we have not initiated litigation, nor has litigation been pending or threatened specifically in writing. We are also, of course, in the new spirit of transparency, open, fair government principles of practices, formally requesting Mr. Beekman's recusal from making any comments or voting on the issue. You would not want his comments to smack him in propriety, or inappropriate personal involvement, because of his intimate dealing with this issue. Mr. Beekman has served as town council, planning commission, street commissioner superintendent, assessor for bonding, signatory of accounts, permit grantor and inspector, building inspector, and believe it or not mosquito authority, which represents a potential conflict of interest related to this matter. These are the ones we know of, this information was obtained through examination of public records. Moving forward, issues. Number one, we provide documents to Mr. Daniel, county attorney, on Monday, and we will still go forward by saying that your kindergarten can see that the escrow agreement has been altered, suggesting possible coercion, fraud, collusion, and a minimum falsification of legal documents. Number two, clear conflict of interest in Mr. Beekman's intimate involvement of nearly every aspect of the surrounding issue. Number three, our parents' money was held in improper account, this money was to be held by the town of Mooresville in lieu of a bond tied to the development of Chesapeake Estates, which as of this date has been vacated and recorded. As stated in correspondence and official meeting minutes, our parents were told that the funds were required to obtain approval of a subdivision, which is in itself illegal. Money was held for an unreasonably extended period of time, sixteen years, I will repeat sixteen years, which is inconsistent with rules of escrow and customary binding principles of practices for our federal banking guidelines and state code. Federal law governs because the funds were held in the federally insured bank. Number four, the town was notified years ago about the problems related to this escrow, and further notified two years ago, when the treasurer of Mooresville, Sandy Perry, was asked about the account balance and discovered no interest in it accruing on the account. In our conversations with Ms. Perry, she disclosed she would look into it, and apparently did. Ms. Perry then stated, I did not think it was right, so I went to town council, and was told not to touch it, leave it alone, and I did not want to get in trouble, so I'm leaving it. This is information packet number two, town clerk treasurer's packet. This chapter applies to all towns, it goes, Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash six dash one. Section two, clerk treasurer electives, chapters both town clerk and town fiscal officer. Section thirty-six dash five dash six six, powers and duties, section six. The clerk and treasurer should do the following, receive and care for all town money, pay money out only in order of town legislative body orders it. Keep account showing when and for what sources the clerk treasurer has received town money, and when and to whom the clerk treasurer has paid out town money. Number five, manage the finances and accounts of the town and make investment of town's money. Number five, town council loathingly ignored the situation or suggestion as elected federal treasurer chose to do nothing to rectify the errors and right the wrongs. See Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash six dash six, section six, paragraph A, one, two, and five. It was her fiduciary duty and responsibility to receive and care for all town money, manage finance accounts, make investments of town money. We assert that this escrow was an investment in town infrastructure, and should have been placed in an interest-bearing account from the start, and deposited account under direct supervision of the town treasurer, not an individual. For instance, Mr. Beekman, with oversight by the town manager, as per Code IC thirty-six dash five dash five dash eight, section six. Please see packet number three. Town legislative body may not employ one of its members as a manager. Number six, we'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Well, I will speak briefly, I'll be at the town council, after I met with you and Seidel yesterday. Obviously, very quickly, I've been in touch with them over the weekend, I was able to get you the issue up in one thirty. I don't think the town should, as your attorney, recommend at this point, and not comment on this, they have an opportunity to examine the information like you have. And I think it would be fair of the town council, they need opportunity to look at their own records, and the annual records, and if they are appropriate, fully analyze the situation, and really, and fairly respond.
Okay, so there's going to be no questions, we are going to go forward and ask for motion and second to approve our request to accept the counter offer, and we'll support it, Mr. Daniel, let her meet. Also, reiterating, the project has been vacated, the monies for that project can no longer be held vacantly. We would like the funds provided in the form of a cashier's check, a certified funds, and this is not a negotiation. We are not here tonight to negotiate, we are here to present facts regarding the funds that our parents paid in good faith to the town, and that have been unable to be used for sixteen years. And we expect an answer this evening, or a vote up or down according to the code. And we also have another packet regarding open door law, that we're, we've provided to Mrs. Perry, to add to the minutes as well, that's our other information we've had. We would like the public to be able to see these rules and regulations, so that they know and can understand how this board is supposed to operate, and how things are supposed to be done. I come from a jurisdiction where it's so far beyond you all, I just don't even know where to go. We looked at each other this evening, and there's abbreviations, there's numbers, there's hopping all around everywhere, it's not transparency. This issue happened, it never should have happened. You have an opportunity to correct it. You have an opportunity to correct it, to pay damages for the problem this is causing my parents. You're up here talking about millions and millions of dollars, and you all can't seem clear to pay a small settlement in an issue where you know this board was wrong. And that's where our stance is.
Well, they don't even know that we should have a counter offer made.
Well, how would that be if?
Because I have told them that's what.
Well, when were you planning on doing that, if you knew we were having the meeting this evening?
Well, this is not the place that these, in my opinion, these matters are resulting. And this board has had no opportunity to examine the materials that you've brought tonight and looked at. You've been here for weeks, or however long it's been, and looked into a lot of things that should have an opportunity.
You've had possession of these documents for twenty years, some of them. Some of them for sixteen years.
Mrs. Crockett, I'm not going to argue with you. I will promise you that there's not a board member up here that before, right now, have any idea what you're talking about. And that's not because they're not good council members. You've been looking at this matter for some time. This is the first time they've heard about it, from the most part, as far as I know, I don't know whether.
We were here last month.
I know you were.
And was there no investigation by this board at that time?
There was, there was an effort made. They asked me to, you know, see if there was some possibility of resolving this and getting your money back. I provided you with the proposed settlement agreement. You regret, rejected that.
This is our counter offer.
I understand. And I, in my opinion, they do not have adequate information to respond to that counter offer.
What kind of information do they need, we're able to provide that, right now?
There's minutes in some of these meetings. I haven't seen any copies of any minutes to the meetings where this plan was accrued, according to what the circumstances were, the plan of which.
So despite the fact that code calls for transparency and the fact that executive meetings have to be handled in a certain way, you're just going to overlook that whole thing?
There's been no executive session in violation of.
Well, you're talking about taking time privately to go through all this.
I can look at that myself. They don't have to look at that. Or any of these town council members can look at that, that's public records. There's been no, there's been no violation of, you know, I'm very careful about the open door. I understand when the open door law is. When I said to you the other day that there may be an executive session, there's been no executive session.
That's because you said you couldn't schedule one for forty-eight hours because we requested that it be scheduled, that's what was necessary to get this problem taken care of.
And that's true. If you read that statute, you find the notice requirements for an executive session, and there was not time.
But you're asking us for more time to go over things, isn't that an executive session?
No, no.
Not according to the rules that we read?
Well, ma'am.
You're not allowed to meet, you're not allowed to speak.
They are allowed to meet.
In groups.
They're allowed to meet.
Not according to the code.
Ma'am, I'm not going to argue the law with you.
Well, this is our position, and we have an agreement that we have already endorsed and meditated. We will leave that with you for the council's signature. And we would like to have a response within twenty-four hours. We've already waited a month, you've had this information for a month. There's nothing we didn't present tonight that was not said a month ago.
Or in the meeting yesterday.
Yes.
Gentlemen, this would be Resolution Six, two thousand and eighteen. This goes back to our edit plan. We have originally stated in our edit plan that we would spend up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our local road and bridge matching grant fund, the community crossings fund. This is a transfer of funds from the edit fund into the local road and bridge matching fund. It is a dollar amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. We have motioned to approve Resolution Six, two thousand and eighteen.
So.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, on the paper?
Aye.
Any other business? Another business, Banning Engineering. This was sent by Banning. It is a offer to assist with the design, construction, and bid documents for the community crossing the grant application, which is due July, August?
You can start submitting if August seventh, I believe, and it ends, I think, September twenty-eighth. So there's a window.
I know that there were, in speaking today, I asked Dave, you know, his thoughts on this, and there are several things that he felt like he could possibly do in the house, but there are several things that you have to have done. The payment assessment plan, the passage scale, if you will, is something that we gave two years ago. And I was informed that that has to be updated every two years. And so they would grade our roads throughout the town. Process that came out of University of Wisconsin, Madison, I think. And gives us the opportunity to grade our roads all the way from the Bay Area. Contracting, design grant application bid management and construction administration contract, I'm assuming would not exceed twenty-six thousand dollars. In the past, we have paid this out of our ready-made fund. We have not, we cannot pay this out of the grant portion of the revenue. Questions for Dave or Brian from Banning Engineering?
I have to hear it. And I think the first time it's done, they've done an outstanding job. I think that we, really and truly, as much as we have going on with the personnel we have, we need to go ahead and have Banning do this for two thousand and eighteen. So I would make a motion to sign this contract, or have Tom sign this contract for twenty-six thousand dollars to live in here.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Sir.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Mrs. Crockett, Mrs. Patel, could I ask you to come back up here for just a moment, please? Did you set down, Mrs. Patel, provided me with this settlement agreement?
Yes.
I hadn't seen it before, but I see that it's been.
There's been some changes. Because we're not going to do a blanket release of everything, and you claim possible for, before against this board forever and all alternative. And specific for the test program.
It's been revised and modified, but you have signed it.
Yes. Because we're acceptable to what's in this agreement.
This is what you wanted the town council to approve tonight?
Yes, yes.
And if they don't approve this particular agreement, Jason and I are going to sue the town.
We don't say to that. We don't know where the issue is at this point.
Okay.
We're open to that.
But you said this is not a negotiation, that's what I tried to.
We want to see what you want, and if we're handling all, we're going to handle this.
Okay. So this, this was the only document that you were willing to access, did you?
That's what we're putting forth today.
Okay, all right, listen, if you're going to get verification, thank you. Nothing additional, thank you.
The new department heads, Chief Master Cole, was not going to be able to make it, but he had one to give one of the apparatus that we had for the fire truck, the latter engine. They had done some, or have looked at and exercised some change orders on it as far as valuing. They want to go in a different direction on the valuing, but it's at no additional cost. So everything has washed out, what they wanted to do, and he wanted to give that to the council. We are still on target for the three hundred days from the point of origin. Dan, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mark, do you have anything for the park?
I had thirty-six calls, ten pounds, five returns.
Park for the park.
All for the park. Water's in the pool and grass is growing, we're cutting it.
And you're cutting it?
We're cutting.
Not as much as we'll be.
Could, if we got some rain.
I don't know. They more?
We started the plane to the creek, all the parking stalls have been harmed. We've done it for hour and a half, it's up until now. Everything like this.
How many's for the floor?
I think with what we've witnessed as a public twice now with the situation with the escrow account that's been brought up, I'm just wondering, if there will be a public resolution, the public will be made aware of the resolution, is that correct?
No question, Pat.
Yeah, okay. Because I think, you know, just from a taxpayer's standpoint, I think the public deserves to know whether this money is being handled properly or not.
Nobody will know.
Not saying I'm siding with anybody, because I don't know about it at all, but, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thanks.
I want to add something.
Who I?
I had to.
Paul.
I'd look into the possibility of setting a camera mirror, maybe it's streaming. So we could do, but horizontal views and night vision, all of our meetings. And the cost I've come up with is like seventeen hundred dollars for installation, everything, tying it in with ours. Our sound mixers, that we've got, and draw rates for events, definitely a lot of go on. And there'd be like a ten dollar bill charged, I think through YouTube, it's streamed it on there. The reason I look at YouTube is our website, and like it, it's where you can go on our app, go on our website, and watch video of town events, and it's ready in town meetings.
Would we, would it have a searchable database on Laserfish, then? Could you go in and search the past meetings?
Yes.
You said that it would be a dollar. That's what I had on hand, that's, that's for training, that's for the training, for responding to users. Running cables, I think, these are your hands.
How many's for the council?
It got sprung a little bit, so I understand the concept. Probably like to see, you know, how much, you know, we, is there a contract you signed at ten dollars a month? How long was that going to be, and I'd like to see that kind of stuff. I think the concept is, in fact, as far as that, games, they have to get another job, unfortunately, but.
I'm working on it.
I'm working on it.
This is not paying you a lot. But I think the concept's good, I hope it did, but I'd like to see a little bit of detail.
How about a motion for general, I think, all of those contract agreements.
Yeah, that, that you are okay, Joe?
No, fine.
Okay. Does it, like, motion? Mark, does he have one motion?
Do I have a second?
Sir.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I apologize, anything else we can add? Motion for approval of payment of claims.
You have to read that tonight.
Yeah.
We all three decided we weren't going to read it, so.
Now, what we have to remember is, in this, in this payment of claims, there was two million dollars worth of transfer in the funds. Health insurance taking them out of the individual department budgets. And then also, there was four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars worth of pay, which was the community matching grant.
I'm clear on all of it.
You have, well, I know, but what you said, you have a football here. I can do motion to approve the payment of claims for the dollar amount of three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So move.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Sir.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We all have to sign it. Our next meeting date will be June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, six thirty P M. Any motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.